Call meeting order, please start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy holiday in case you sneak out before we're done. Have a good vacation. We will start with item 1.0, consent agenda, 1.1. And then make a motion that the Board of Education approve the items listed on the consent agenda for December 1, 2013. Is there a second? Mr. Bush? Is there anyone who would like to pull this?
Can I pull item A, please?
A? Anyone else who want to pull any items from the consent agenda? Okay, we will vote on items B, C, D, E, F, and G. All those favor? Unanimous. Mrs. Warren, item A?
On page three of those minutes, I just wanted to add that Karen Zane.
Do you have expulsion? No, no, I'm already doing it.
No, I'm already doing it. Karen's name is Michelle Harlow.
Do you know the answer?
I have.
You have, yes. Anything else on item A? Okay, I have a motion to approve 1.1A. Mr. Kemp? Is there a second? Mrs. Bush? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
My 1.1A says that it's expulsion.
Oh.
Since it's expulsion.
That's why I asked when they were separate parent.
So it was really B you wanted to pull?
It was really B.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just change A to B. Now we'll move on to item 2.0, secretary's report. Opportunity for the Board of Education to add or delete agenda items? Do you want to add or delete some agenda items? Okay, item 2.2, Rockland High School representative, Olivia Lert, who wants to start?
Good evening, Board. This Friday, we had their student faculty football game. It was a hard fought event. I'd say a good turnout. Faculty ended up losing, but I'd say it was good sports all around. And this past Saturday, our school competed in the As Schools Match Wits event, which is a, from what I understand, a Jeopardy-type event in which our school placed, or made it to the playoffs, the top eight out of 45 to 50 teams that were there. Schools from both CT and Massachusetts. And these events will be aired on TV, and we did a really good job, so it was nice to see. And as far as sports have been going, for the wrestling team, we've had about seven or eight new kids join this year, and it looks like Brad should have a full team for once, which should be nice. Every sport I've seen has been going hard in the season. No one's been slacking off, so it looks like the sports are going to have a good turnout during this time.
Thank you. Is there any more questions for Erin? Okay, Olivia?
Good evening. So we currently have a toy drive going on at RHS, and I'm sure many of the other schools, and it's really good to see a lot of student participation. They're walking around, playing around with bags, and it just makes you feel good and makes the holiday feeling really set in. It's not just giving, it's receiving, that whole bit. The band and chorus concert, holiday concert, is on Monday, and I encourage you all to attend. It starts at seven. We have a wide variety of music being played, and it'll just be a lot of fun. We've worked really hard, and I hope I see some of you there. The Austin and Alley concert happened last Wednesday. I know I saw Mr. Kemp, and it was really good. It was a real community event. It was really well done. A lot of great performances, a lot of raffle baskets. It was just really heartfelt, and it was good to see the community come together like that. I think it just was really a good reflection of what Vernon has to offer. Also, as I'm sure you're all aware, Sue Spudinski passed away, the middle school chorus teacher, and I would just like to commend how that whole situation was handled. I think it was done very professionally. There were no bombs dropped over the announcements. You know, they called the band and chorus students down to the auditorium and said, you know, this is what happened. Take your time, group, now. We didn't want you hearing from a third party. And so I thought that was really well done, and I would just like to give my thanks for it being done so professionally, especially with such hard moves to handle. And lastly, I just, this is out of student request. I know that the elementary school currently placed at the high school. I know it's a great, I think it's a great idea, and my heart goes out to a lot of those kids, but I would just like to let you guys know that a lot of students have actually come to me saying, are you going to talk about this at the board event? Because the hallway of joining it, they share walls, and the walls are really, really thin. Students' connection passing out through them. And so basically, during the middle of tests or just in the middle of class, you hear a wide variety of profanities and just a loud noise, whether it's profanities or not, and it can get really distracting and take away from the regular high school's education. So I'm in full, like, full support of this whole elementary school program, just be aware of what it's taking away from the high school, and I'm sure Erin can attest to that as well. So, thank you.
Please, do we have any questions for Olivia? Thank you very much. Move on to item 3.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the Board and citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Please come forward, stay for me, and address and sign in.
Tony Damon Merrill, 138 Grove Street. I left the last meeting sort of perplexed, particularly around the curriculum conversation that took place, and it's really baffling to me that we're not further developed in our curriculum with the money that we're putting into developing it and the staff we're using to develop it. I feel like we should be a little further than what we are. And it's mostly concerning to me because our test is shifting. You know, we're taking a different test starting next year, and our curriculum isn't ready. And so how do we expect our kids to perform on standards when we don't have curriculum to support those standards? And as a taxpayer, that's, it's pretty concerning to me. How do we get out of that bottom 30 when we're not providing our students and staff the curriculum tools that they need to be successful? And then going over tonight's packet, the school improvement goals and strategies just seem to be quite redundant from one year to the next, specifically in the building rapport for parents and community. I mean, those things, I believe most of them were listed last year under the school improvement goals. So are we going to be trying anything new? Are we going to be thinking outside the box? I know the superintendent holds a coffee connection. Maybe the board can hold its own connection kind of thing to, you know, meet with the public, hear our concerns, maybe get responses. Maybe our principals can do something similar. I just feel like we use the climate survey, which really is very subjective. You don't know how many people are actually really responding to it because you can technically take it as many times as you want to on the internet. It's not booting you off if you've taken it once, or twice, or three times. So are we sure that those numbers are accurate? And they're really based on people's feelings per se. There's not factual data to it, and I would just like to see us do something a little bit more actual, like, so we can really know what the climate is. It's great that people strongly disagree, disagree, whatever, but there's real no, you don't know why they're actually saying that if they don't make clear comments in the comment section. I just feel like that area of year's score improvement really could be worked on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? We will move on to item 4.0, Curriculum. 4.1, Update on Curriculum. Thank you. It's Fisher. I think Mr. Burke just had a curriculum committee meeting, and I'm going to turn this over to him so he can provide that update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do my best not to repeat the entire hour of committee that we had earlier, but I do want to give you an overview of what I'm going to attempt to try to explain this evening. It's, first of all, to give you an overview of the revision to the curriculum handbook, which is referred to as Greater Expectations. This was originally June 2011, and your packet is an update to that. It's called the Curriculum Review Renewal Plan. It also has Greater Expectations on it. Also, I would like to go over the new format for the curriculum documents themselves, provide you with a timeline for curriculum development and implementation. I want to go over the concept of textbooks, and then, of course, provide you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. I also have Mr. Gussie and Mr. Tessa here to also assist with any questions that you may have specific to their departments. So to give you a quick overview, the curriculum document that was previously written, the Greater Expectations, the majority of this content here is now in this new format, but a couple of the highlights, if you turn to page three, you'll see the stages that we used to stage the curriculum process to go through, and then you'll see a list of questions on page three and four. Those questions will be used by curriculum writing teams to help guide their writing and also used as a rubric to help evaluate the curriculum document once it's completed. The next page, you'll see page five is trying to create a leadership structure to give focus and to give direction. You can see the hierarchy here. I'll quickly go through this. The descriptions are underneath, but in essence, there is the Steering Committee, known as the Curriculum Leadership Team, that will meet twice a year. Curriculum Leadership Team will consist of myself, the curriculum leaders, and the curriculum heads from, department heads from the high school, middle school, reading math coaches and academic coaches. And essentially what that is, is just to say, where are we, and what is the scope of the work that needs to be done? This will be in September, and then in June would be to review any documents that were completed and ensure that they are the quality that we want them to be before they're presented to the board. They also, when they create that to-do list, if you will, in the fall, that's given to the subject area teams, and that sounds very complicated, but essentially what that is would be represented from the high school, represented from the middle school, represented from the elementary level, and their goal is to ensure that what we are doing, the curriculum that we're writing in third grade, makes sense for all the grades that come before it and come after it, and to make sure that we have that clear articulation, that we are making sure that we're addressing all the standards that are required, either national standards, local standards, state standards, et cetera, but that gives perspective and make sure that we're not doing things in isolation. It also provides that horizontal articulation. We do have five, six elementary buildings. We'll ensure that the curricula is articulated horizontally as well. Those teams would then give specific punch lists, if you will, to the subject area teams or the ad hoc teams. Those are the writing teams, and to give you vision of that, that might be three third-grade teachers that are sitting down and writing the third-grade language arts curricula, and they're given specific guidance on the tasks that they need to accomplish because we're going to go through a process to evaluate our current states of our curricula, so they have an exact understanding of the direction to go. So it looks very complicated. It has a lot of description on it, but that's the essence, is just to make sure that what we're doing makes sense in the big picture and for long term, rather than just doing things in isolation. If you turn to page nine, this is a revised scope and sequence curriculum revision. This is trying to do the best that we can do based on where we are currently, what my best guess is where we are currently. We have done some good things in district. We have done some curriculum writing. We have approved curriculum, but we need to further that. We need to develop it more in detail, as well as address any changes to national standards. For instance, the National Science Standards just came out. The state has yet to approve those. We obviously have the Common Core, the SBAQ. We'll make sure that we're aligned to that. ELA in math, as well as the other areas, and social studies, which has been developing for about 10 years now. The rumor is that that should be approved sometime soon. So that's the overall process. I'm going to get to the more detailed timeline in a moment. If you turn to page 11, this is, now we get to start at page 10, page 11, getting the dependencies here, and I'm going to go into greater detail in the curriculum format in a moment, but this is just to say that we have a standardized format for all curricular areas, page through 12, and what that means, I'll explain in a few moments, and then some supporting documents in there, sort of check in through the process on pages 13 and 14. Some, page 15, you'll see some definitions. The plan to, before February, we have a professional learning day in February, a full day, is for me to create a writing handbook that gives specific detail for each area of the curriculum document. So if you're sitting down as a teacher, write down, what does this mean? What does the central question mean? It gives you guidance to what goes in there. It's also the stylebook, what font should be used, margins, et cetera. So we have a unified approach to this. Now, other than just looking pretty, there is an important part to that, is to make sure that we are aligned, again, all of our curricular areas, as well as vertically and horizontally within specific subject areas. So that document, D, Appendix D, will be translated into a full handbook. And then, thank you to the high school. They have provided a new system for bringing new courses forward. That's on Appendix, page 16, 17, and 18, as well as a title change to any courses. Did some excellent work with that, and they have now articulated a process. And if you look on page 18, you'll see that they are using the new format for that. So when new courses are coming to you as a board, you're going to get a full overview of what that course will look like, so it gives you some substance to approve. There will be some title changes coming forward, and essentially what that means is the content remains the same, but the titles perhaps don't reflect the content of that course accurately, and so we want to make sure that we have a clear program study so that students can make good choices. And then the lamps part is a glossary of terms, so if you get overloaded with acronyms, this might be a good go-to source for you to give you some sense of what's going on here in the district, as well as in terms of curriculum. So that's the revised document. Is this the final form for the next 10 years? I doubt it. We will be making revisions as we live with the document, but we want to make sure that we have some structure. I will pause there to ask any questions about that piece before I move on to the new format for the document.
Mr. Kemp?
One of the forms, imagine on other ones, there's 3.2 is the reference to resources.
You turn to the page, please.
It's page 17.
Thank you.
It's on any of the forms. We have always asked the question, what impact on staffing does the addition of a course have? And sometimes it's staffing neutral because you're dropping something, or whatever you're going to do. Is that, in 3.2, is that where you're going to clarify that?
If you look right above, you see 3.1, FTE. That is reference to teachers.
Okay, but again, the question is, is it going to be, I imagine you would have an FTE, but the question is, overall, will we have any change in our total FTE head count? Yes or no?
Yes. That is the estimated cost of implementing this course. Is it a swap, one for one? You would be adding. There's also some other pieces to it. What is the impact on other courses? So that will show up there. If we need an additional .2, .4 teacher, it would show up under that section.
Well, clarifying, when you do say that you're going to need 1.0, that is, that would be for that course, but again, we need to understand that it's going to be staff neutral at the end of the day because, you know, further down, you can write, because we're dropping a course. Now, if there will be a change, we just need to understand what it is we'd be approving. Okay?
Yep, that is the understanding from the high school, so they will make sure that's included.
Well, any course in the system?
Yes.
High school, whatever.
Thank you.
Mr. Stansfield?
In looking at a lot of the timelines, it looks like there's a three-year implementation plan for new courses. Can you just speak to why a new course takes three years to implement?
Specifically for a new course, you can imagine that the process that's involved in that, it would start in the spring. Let's imagine a new course coming forward, align to add a course at 12th grade Shakespearean literature. I want to introduce that. I need to do some background study. I'm sure that we fully discuss what is the impact of. I'm adding a new semesterized English language course at the 12th grade level. What is the impact within the English department? What is the impact on other electives? So that takes some time. So the timeline for that would be starting in the spring, and then it would go to approval to the different signatures down here at the bottom through the fall, and then would come to this body by November 1st. The reason that it's November 1st is that it would go into the program studies, which is printed around the beginning of December, because students select their courses in the spring, sometime, usually about March. So it's a, basically, it's a spring through the following fall, so it's about a year and a half process.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misstated. I didn't mean a new course. I meant for the new curriculum. You've got, I have, implementation 1, 2, 3 in the chart on page nine. It looks like every new curriculum is taking three years to implement once it's been approved?
Implementation is you're actually using it. So once the board approves it, on page nine, you can see that you go through a review and research for a year. That's really taking a hard, close look at the existing documents, the existing curriculum, existing practices, as well as existing research in that area, and you do standards, Common Core, Design Standards. The following year would be used for the actual writing of it, and then the recommendation to the various bodies in the BOE approval. Implementation essentially means, so here's your approved document, go and use it for three years.
So does something change between year one and three, or is it the same over those three years?
That you're jumping the gun a little bit here to some of the process, and I'll use that now. If you turn to the curriculum timeline, which is the first page in the overall packet, so those are digitally, it's right after the placeholder there, the yellow placeholder, we are starting to use the language of curriculum guide and implementation guide, and the curriculum guide is really the 1,000-foot view. It gives you the overarching goals, standards, essential questions, et cetera, for the year, for the course, and then it gives you the same thing for each individual unit, so it's an overview for a teacher to say, yes, this is the scope of the work that needs to be accomplished within this unit, and what should students know and be able to do. The next level down is really the 10-foot or 1-foot view, is the implementation guide. Now, the difference is, all the curriculum guides will follow the format that's in here, so every single document will look the same. Implementation guides are going to be different based on level, based on subject. You know, a ceramics course will be different than third-grade language arts. So the implementation guides, those will change over time because you're going to live them. Teachers are going to talk about them. They're going to collaborate. They're going to come up with new lessons. They're going to come up with new ideas. That's the whole idea of the implementation piece, is that we want that to be a living document that changes with the understandings and professionalism and experience. The curriculum guide, really, that will stay static for those five years. We would make some adjustments if we see that there's something missing, or if we're not really addressing the standards, or we're not addressing a new assessment, that we would bring that forward with that slight revision, but that structure, that framework remains consistent for five years. The implementation piece would be a living document. That'll answer your question.
Yes, you do. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you. So quickly to the new format, there is a section at the back that has the large handwritten black numbers on it. It says BPS Curriculum Document Department and Samples, and this was just an example. I wanted to show you what it would actually look like. Taking existing approved document, this is an 11th, 12th grade, I believe it's an elective course, Advanced Creative Writing, and shows you the existing document I was able to find on Ms. Marassa's hard drive. And then quickly, realistically, this took me five to 10 minutes, is I cut and pasted all the material into the new format, starting on page 12. And let me walk you through the new format quickly. And just as a side note, this was shown to department leaders and department chairs and coaches at the three levels, and it did get support. The format is based on a national format, kind of called Understanding by Design, so this is not just made on a land. It actually is based on a common format. And to give you, again, this is the 1,000-foot view. You can see the course description at the top on page 12 in the handwritten piece, and then these first two pages, really, this is the overview for the entire course. So I now, as a teacher, as a parent, as an administrator, I can see what are the expectations for the overall course. You have your course standards, and again, I actually put these in, so don't quote me on these. I'm not an English person, so, but these are the claims from the SBAQ, actually, based on the Common Core standards, so these are the overarching claims. The course objectives, this is what students want to accomplish over the course. Essential questions, the large overarching questions that students should be dealing with, grasping with, struggling with. And then on the next page, you get into the page 13, and then you get into the assessments. So it's almost like a sandwich, if you will. We're going to set up expectations. What should students know and be able to do? Then we want to make sure at the end we have the assessments to tell us. Did they meet those standards, those pieces that we want them to know and be able to do? Turning to page 14, we have the unit, which now breaks down the standards into more specifics. For instance, in this case, it's crafting a short story. You can see these are standards for the Common Core. What specific standards are we addressing? What are the overarching objectives? And language from the previous document, what are the big ideas? So translate a little bit more into what am I going to try to accomplish as a teacher? What do I want my students to know and be able to do? The essential questions, again, big, these are ones I pulled out, so maybe not the best examples, but they are, you know, essential questions are ones that you struggle with and students need to argue about, debate. And then the essential, I'm sorry, the focus questions gives us even more specificity to what should be taught. The next page, page 15, now we're getting into larger concepts and specific skills. And again, these are areas that all areas should be, all curricular areas should be able to fill in, but again, it gives you that view of what should be accomplished within this case, it's a five-week unit. What are the big things that should be accomplished within those five weeks? And of course, at the end, what assessment will tell us whether or not students have accomplished these concepts, these skills, and these standards? The next page, and to, again, going back to my previous comments, this is the curriculum guide. This is that overarching framework. Individual courses, individual grade levels will have an implementation guide that would not be public, that would be behind a closed server, and would, this is just an example. I created this, the blue, if you will. So this is just to give you an example. For this course, you could say five-week planner. This is just to give you a sense, what should I be doing on a weekly basis? Shows you some of the activities, some of the little assessments down below, resources. You could include vague vocabulary. There's a number of things that can be included here. If you're in the fourth grade and you have a smartboard, there's hardcore lessons that you could include in here. And the goal here is, this format is very useful in a digital format. Can be saved, can be posted online, and then you could make those links if you have a specific assessment, specific resource, specific website. Those could be links to those actual documents or those resources. So instead of having large binders printed out for each individual teacher, we would digitize this document and make it a living document again. That could be changed on a regular basis, and you wouldn't have to make, you know, 40 copies for each fourth-grade teacher. So that is the new format. Just wanted to give you an overview. I welcome questions at this point.
Is there anybody with any questions? I guess we all understand.
All of them.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. I did have one more.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just ask. If you want to go, that's fine.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Just, the board did ask about a timeline, and the plan is, we have a full-day professional learning day in February, and every curricular area will be spending part of that time, approximately four hours, reviewing their current state of the state, if you will, of their curriculum. So in other words, if you have something that's sitting on a shelf from 1988, 1998, then we want to make sure that we would translate that document into the new format. Everyone would have this new format in a Word form, so they would be able to add information, edit it. If it's currently a digital format, we will use clerical help to cut and paste that material into the new format so that you would have that February morning, so you wouldn't have to create yourself. And then the beautiful thing about the document is, if there's a section missing, it stands out because it's a white block in the middle of the page that's saying, you need to add essential questions for unit two. So that, at the end of the day, everyone would have a clear new format. They would have every document done, and then I would create a digital survey for each section, for each one of those documents, and teachers at the end of the day would go for eighth-grade social studies. Yes, we have central questions. Yes, we have this, but we don't have this. We don't have this. So that's all collected. It's in a spreadsheet, and then I would have a clear understanding of where each curriculum document is, whether it's aligned, whether they're aligned to standards, whether they're ready for the new assessments, and then that actually creates an action plan for future curriculum writing. And to give you the quick version, in June, we are planning a curriculum writing academy, is what we're calling it, so the day after school ends, in this case, June 11th, hopefully, that it's a math and language arts focus, that those teams of teachers, third-grade teachers, will have a clear understanding of what needs to be completed for the third-grade document. will have a clear understanding of what needs to be completed for the third-grade document. And that we have, and I already spoke with Mr. Gussi and Mr. Testo, they've already given me their best guess. So let's say, third-grade language arts, we team four teachers for three days for four hours each day. So I budgeted that, we've encountered that money, we'll be covering it tomorrow. So, and that's, that is the plan, to get the bulk of the curriculum writing for our core areas of math and language arts done by the end of June. And then you can see, the plan is to try to use similar formats at the end of the year. Um, in the Curriculum Writing Academy, you will use other professional learning time to get the other curriculars completed in a relatively quick timeline.
Anybody have any questions with Mr. Burke? Thank you very much. Um, I'm at 5.0, general business 5.1, high school in digital age. I have to introduce our high school principal, Ms. Rockin, assistant principal, Ms. Galley, and our director of guidance, Ms. Mary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
They are going to introduce you to the digital age.
Well, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. And so, um, we thought the best way to, um, present to you is, is the same as the best way that, uh, when we teach our kids, and that's interactively where you participate. And so we're going to use a program called NearPod, which hooks up to my iPad, and I will be sort of emulating a teacher. And I'll be communicating with you through our wireless network and onto your iPad. Now, you're all signed on to, uh, uh, NearPod, I assume? If you look up here. Oh, okay, right, right. Uh, I'm just gonna, uh, this here is my screen here, right? And so people will be able to see, I'm going to play this presentation right here. Again, if I were a teacher, I might have a whole bunch of presentations. So I'm just going to pick this presentation here, and you'll see where, down here, it says, launch. I'm going to start this presentation. And so, uh, you'll see, up here, there's a code. And I'll read that code to you, and that's, again, you do not see this. Only the teachers would see this. And so that pin is L U Q E O. So if you can type that into your student ID, L U Q E O. And when you do, um, I'll ask you to put your name in. Now, why don't you put in a movie star instead of your own name? Because there is a quiz in here, and I wouldn't want to embarrass anybody in the quiz. Especially Mr. Picar over there, away, besides my paycheck. So, uh, once you put the name in, go ahead and hit submit. And again, um, this is what a teacher would do for this kind of thing, using this kind of technology. And these kinds of things would also go very, very quickly, once the routines are down. Wow, I see Chado up there, that's a, that's not so much a gender thing as a generational thing. Olivia, do you know who Chado is?
No.
Okay, never mind.
I'm sorry, Michelle, I missed that. Should we get a close-up of him?
Okay, so we, uh, it looks like we have, uh, oh, waiting for one more. Oh, Kim, Kim's signing in with us here. Yeah, okay. All right. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive right in. So, uh, you'll see down at the bottom of my screen, again, you don't see this, this is what the teacher sees. This is the sign-in page here, and this is the first of my three slides. We have several polling questions for you, and then we have, uh, what we call a formative assessment. So instead of just showing my slideshow, I'm going to present it to you on your iPads. All right, so here's the first one, you'll see, up here, I have it lined up, there's two images. And this says, launch it to you, send it out to you guys. So I'm going to hit share, press that button, and it should be showing up on your iPads momentarily. There it is. Now, you, you can scroll between it. Uh, that's for differentiated instruction. Those of you that get that one real quickly can, can move ahead. Um, I'm, I'm not going to make any bones about this, I'm going to hit it right up front. I think we need a one-to-one laptop or tablet program here at Rockville High School. Um, I think it's a critical need, for reasons I'll go over in these slides. Uh, the first one, you're experiencing right now, that's engaging personalized instruction. As you will see, you can't hang out during lessons with technology. Um, modern-day communication is so incredible that the teacher can see, and I'll be able to watch you and see how you're doing. Um, so that's a huge one. We all know the attraction of kids to technology. You see your own, um, I guess, little brothers and sisters, and, and children, and nieces and nephews and grandkids, perhaps, and how they adapt to it. We are taking advantage of that at the high school, we need to really leverage that and expand that. Um, the next bullet point, technology integrated into all aspects of learning. The old model that you and I, I think, learned with was, um, well, at least I learned on, on typing. I took business courses in typing in high school to learn how to type. And then as we got things like Office, uh, we would take keyboarding skills. Now we take Office apps. We need to move beyond that thing. We need to integrate technology into every aspect of what we do. And the example I'll give you is, when I was playing around with this, setting all this up on Saturday, I logged into Khan Academy, you'll see a presentation of that momentarily. My daughter was signed in under my, my email, and she was, uh, using, um, uh, Khan Academy to brush up on differential equations at UConn. So, uh, everybody uses it. If you have a, a student in college, they pay their bill online. They look at their courses online. The days of us giving ad hoc access to kids are over. I think, unless we teach them to fully integrate it, we're doing them a huge disservice. Um, in terms of enhancing differentiated instruction and assessment, you'll see a great example of that tonight. Um, as, as many of you know, differentiated instruction is very, very difficult to do in practice. It takes, um, just years to work at it, tons and tons of work, but is, is something we must do for our kids. It's made much easier by, um, technology, as hopefully you'll see tonight. Um, the online testing, uh, that's the second slide. Uh, you know that, um, with respect to the Common Core, Sback now all has the computer adaptive testing, where all our tests will be taken online. Now, two parts about that. One thing is, people have to get used to taking those tests online. They'll have to do things like, um, um, correct things online, input, scroll. It sounds easy, but there's a skill to taking the test online. And the second thing is perhaps more obvious, um, the, for, for us at the high school, we have numerous labs that we teach a lot of our business courses. And in many cases, we're going to have to displace those kids, so that, so that, that all the people that we have to do computer aided, or, uh, computer adaptive testing on, um, can take their tests. Um, so we think the way that, one benefit of a one-to-one program is that they will be totally familiar with that platform and be able to take this test and truly concentrate on their knowledge. So of course, the second bullet on the second slide, 24/7/365. Um, part of this per, this, uh, presentation really deals with the fact that education, as you and I learned it, uh, and perhaps even Olivia and Erin, is, is really, um, that framework is changing radically. We, we can't be bound by the things that you and I were bound by. For example, um, why must someone have access to instruction only when, uh, school is in session, from 7:30 to 2:00? Why can't they have access to instruction at home that night? Well, the answer, of course, is, they can. Whether it's a teacher filming them, or Khan Academy, or something like that, we need to give them access to, uh, learning all the time. Um, the access to learning is not equitably distributed. That's the equity issue with respect to platforms, like, uh, laptops and iPads. Uh, many of our kids have access to them at home, many do not. Um, so that's a strong, strong reason to, um, uh, consider a one-to-one program. And of course, this last one on the second slide, um, we, I think, are being left behind by people that have recognized these things earlier. And it is a fact, whether we like it or not, that one of the reasons magnet schools can attract so many people is that they have greater technological use and resources and integration into their instructional program. So, uh, so now I'm going to move on to one of the interactive portions. You'll see down here, the first one is a poll, and so I'm going to ask you a poll question. I think you, you answer it and then submit it. Again, I call it up on my thing, and I get a launch right up top here. Oh, yeah, right.
All right, I just want to explain a little bit about what you're going to see. So, um, what we call this in the classroom is a formative assessment. Um, formative assessments are exactly that, they're tests, which is to merely inform instruction, not to give a grade necessarily. Um, and so, for example, um, I might give a pre-test before I start a unit to see where my students are and where I need to focus my instruction. Um, it makes a lot of sense, you can also use these formative assessments in the middle of a lesson. Are they getting these concepts? Um, in the classrooms now, most of our teachers use a do-now or an exit slip, something like that, right? You guys have those in your classrooms. So you'll, you'll see that a lot. The problem with those is, then you have to sit and grade them, the kids grade each others. Um, the exit slips, the teachers grade that night, uh, they don't get to see the teacher for two more days. They may not remember where they didn't understand something. So what you're, you're going to see now, um, we're going to be able to tell where specific students, being you right now, um, where you are in terms of understanding this blended learning approach or this one-to-one, um, to either modify our instruction, move on, or revisit the content in a different way. Um, and like I said, this is, this gives us immediate feedback. So we're going to see this now, if you...
Um, you can go ahead and start answering your questions. And, and if you look at my screen, the teacher's screen, you see up top that I can see, uh, what your answers are, and this is a summary of the answers up here. And so what I'll, what I would do as a teacher is just scroll down, wait till everybody answers, and I'm waiting for Gumby. And Gumby has answered, so we're all answered. And so, um, now I'll move on to the, uh, next polling question. And I'll launch it, and it should be out to you. Robert Redford, and the famous movie star Dave K. Pop? Dave K. just answered, all right. Okay. And so, uh, I'm going to try an interesting feature. Uh, if I hit share up top here, you see this? I can send the results out to you, and you can look at your answers. So I'm going to hit share, and it should go out to you, so that you see what the total answers are. Remember, normally, you would not see this screen here that I'm looking at. Normally, I would be walking around the class with my iPad in my hand, connecting here our Wi-Fi. Uh, so now I'm going to move on to our third polling question. Oops. And I'll send it to you. And again, did you see me scrolling? This, I mean, it's, it's a perfect way to see, uh, whom I need your help, who's finished. Whoop, there we are, looks like we're all done. Okay, just so, uh, you can see the results, I'll share those results with you. All right, and so now I'm going to move on into a true formative assessment. And again, this is what Lindsay talked about. Uh, teachers know what a formative assessment is, it's not to give you a grade. They have little or no value for a grade book, but they sort of tell you where your audience stands, and you respond according to that formative assessment. And so I'm going to launch to you your pre-assessment. Um, and you'll notice up here, this tells me, um, what, there's four questions on it. It tells me Gumby's on question one, and so I'll be able to see what, what, uh, what people's answers are. So go ahead and, uh, if you're ready to take the quiz, four questions, go all the way through. Right.
And scroll down.
Oh, yeah, the first one has a scroll down, so you, there's five answers on the first one. Now, you see, I'm monitoring this as the, as you're completing them. Um, it tells me where people are. Gumby's forging ahead. Um, you'll see that, uh, we're looking for Kesha. Kesha still is perhaps struggling, oh, Kesha, I'm so sorry. See, I guess it's generation, right?
Yeah.
Not Kesha?
No.
I'm just going to see if any of the elementary principals are laughing back there. Okay, um, so again, this is valuable to me, because I can, I can monitor, uh, the status of everybody. Now, um, I'll, I'll wait until, until everybody's, uh, finished, and then I'll, I'll show you some of the analysis I'm doing. I think the last one is, uh, do you want to submit your answers, or do you want to go back and change? I'll ask you to go ahead and submit them. Now I know who Kesha is, Olivia.
Well, it wasn't any of that.
Ouch. Ouch. Okay, John Doe, Kesha, and Dave K. Oh, and Chado. Now, if I were a teacher, I might go cruise by, just sort of wander by, uh, John Doe and Dave K., just to look down to see how they're doing, you know? Uh, again, you would not have this information, so they wouldn't know what I'm looking at. I could just cruise by and say, you know, um, John, how you doing there? No, actually, we're waiting for that, uh, rugged western star, Dave K. Oh, I, oh, you mean it's not, oh! Oh, I, I never would have guessed, Mr. K, sorry. Okay, and so now I see everyone's answered, and so I'm going to share the results with you. Um, so you can look at the overall results, uh, your, your results. Right?
Wow.
Now, uh, my review sheet, this is what I look at.
It's over my head.
You'll see that the red answers are incorrect answers, the green answers are correct. And it shows you what, uh, uh, answer you put down there. For example, John Doe got the second question wrong, he answered number four, et cetera. And so this gives me a quick judge of where my class is. So there is some knowledge about some of the terms and conditions we've seen in here, but as you can see from the distribution of the reds and greens, um, we've got a class to teach. Okay, and so now, um, I'm going to go to this portion. Um, I will tell you in advance, uh, there's a network issue, you can embed websites in here, and I'm, and I have embedded, actually, the, um, uh, Arnie Duncan YouTube video that we showed before, we can't, because of the network that we set this up on at the high school, can't get a YouTube video here, so we have contingency plan. But I'd show you, uh, what we do. I'll share it with you, and you'll see that the YouTube screen will pop right to yours. And so you can play that at your, um, at your desk, on your laptop, or iPad, of course, not here. And so we're going to do a quick switcheroo and show it to you. Okay, this starts off silently, now you know... Now you know where the quote comes from.
The National Education Technology Plan recognizes that technology has the potential to take that transformation to scale.
Four-minute video.
The plan sets five goals that will help us transition to digital classrooms to transform learning. First, technology can fundamentally change the learning process so it's more engaging and tailored to individual students' needs and interests. To achieve this goal, both states and districts must create and acquire learning resources that align with the rigorous college and career readiness standards the states are showing so much courage and leadership in adopting.
My name is Scott Dickinson. I'm a blended learning instructor at Rockville High School. I found blended learning to have many benefits for students. First off, students are able to work at their own pace. This will really allow students to work on the courses at home. They can work kind of at school. If they have an after-school job, they can really work around their schedule. This is great because it really gives students the ownership of their education and therefore makes them more college and career ready.
The second goal is to use technology in the next generation of assessments so they give teachers the information they need to regularly identify and address students' individual learning needs throughout the school year, not just at the end of the year. These evaluations will go far beyond the end-of-course bubble tests available today and will use the latest technologies to give teachers real-time data they need to differentiate instruction and improve student outcomes.
Blended learning also has many benefits for the teacher. It really is a way for the teacher to differentiate instruction for their student and ensure that each student, basically, is given guidance to their specific learning style.
I like blended learning because I can do my own math at my own pace.
The third goal is to connect teachers with their peers and experts so they are continually learning about the resources available to them to meet the ever-changing needs of children in their classrooms. We can achieve the transition to digital learning only if teachers and students have access to what they need to do to do their work. That's why the fourth goal is to build infrastructure that allows us to support access in and out of the school. Finally, the fifth goal is to harness the power of technology to help schools become more productive, to accelerate student achievement faster than ever before.
I would be taking two English classes. I don't speak too much. You go at your own pace and finish anytime you want.
Despite very difficult financial times, we must improve student outcomes in ways that historically may have seemed impossible.
With blended learning, it also gives the teacher an opportunity to work more one-on-one with struggling students. With that virtual component, it really frees up a lot of time so that the teacher can concentrate with those struggling students.
Blended learning has allowed me to catch up and avoid summer school.
If we accomplish all these goals, we'll have realized the immense potential for technology to prepare students for success in the internationally competitive, knowledge-based economy. And our children and our country deserve no less.
I love being a blended learning instructor because now I no longer feel like a dictator in front of a truck door. I feel like I'm a coach for my students and I'm going to coach them to succeed.
The plan sets an ambitious target of reaching these five goals by 2015. But this is absolutely no time to think small. The sense of urgency is too great. By fully integrating technology into everything teachers do, we will make progress towards providing the digital learning experiences our children need to prepare them for future success.
Okay, so I'm going to switch back to the presentation now. Again, that would normally be embedded and is embedded in your presentation. We just can't access that network here with these computers. And so if your computer timed out and there's a lock on it, the number is 1234. And I'm going to move to the next presentation. And again, same thing, I just hit that. I see that there's four slides in this presentation and I'll launch that to you now. I'll give you all a moment just to make sure you're able to see it. And I'll ask Kim Merron to go over some of the aspects of online learning.
As we were here a few weeks ago, about a month ago, talking about our Gradpoint classes and OpenNet as to why we wanted to go to online learning, blended learning. Again, there's research that's out there. This one's just a little bit older that says, you know, in 2009, 10, there was over a million enrollments in online education. And that can come from a variety of sources. The reason that we're looking for it, one obviously is credit recovery, helping those students to gain those credits and get back on track. But we also like to expand to where there are courses. We don't have the enrollments to offer, but we really want to provide the opportunity for a student to take a course. And so we can do that through the online vision. Also, if you move, again, you can move at your own pace, looking at the different slides. But we talk about online learning. The other reason is we're preparing them for college. A lot of colleges now require students to take an online course. There are states that are now requiring students to take an online course for high school graduation. I believe Michigan is one of them, Florida is one of them. And so every student is required to take an online course before they graduate high school. And so we're moving in that direction as well. So it's also important in that aspect.
Just a reminder on the difference between online learning and blended learning. Online is you take the course totally on your own. Blended is where you have regular and perhaps regularly scheduled access to a teacher. And we're focusing on, we expect most of our work to be blended with some online if it's best for the student.
Just to piggyback on that, there are schools out there that are strictly blended learning places now. For example, there's this high school out in Arizona named Carpe Diem. And there have 300 cubicles basically assigned for the kids. And then the kids leave and go to workshops by teachers. So they're doing the learning both individually on the computer and in small groups with individually with the teacher and working more project-based on the stuff that they've now learned on the computer to bring that difference between the traditional classroom, the just online learning, and actually making a combination of blended learning.
Thanks, Kim. And now, one of your pre-assessment questions was what you knew about flipping the classroom. Lindsay?
So flipping the classroom, I've actually been able to see that firsthand. One of my colleagues in my last district taught his AP Physics course with a flipped classroom. And what that basically is, is the instruction, the lecture, the information is for the students to do on their own time, at home, study hall, whatever that time is available to them, but not in the classroom. The classroom is where they get to apply those concepts. And if they struggle, where they get teacher help as a guide to be able to help them apply those concepts. In general, obviously I said AP Physics. This works for very motivated students that are willing to take the time and really absorb that kind of information outside the classroom. You talked about differentiating. It's not just for credit recovery, as Ms. Merron was talking about. That's not the only thing that we can do with the one-to-one. We really could look at something like flipping the classroom and truly helping our kids make very deep connections and extra time to apply those concepts in the classroom.
Next, I would go to an embedded video, which I'll share with you, but you won't be able to play, so we'll call that up on our alternate computer here.
This is an example of, I don't know how many of you heard Khan Academy, but this is an example of an Algebra 1 lesson in Khan Academy.
Solve for x.
Now, I just want to pause for a second and say, this is about a two-minute lesson on solving for an inequality. We just went on Khan Academy. We called up Algebra. We took one of the first ones. And the idea would be, this wouldn't be exposed to you the first time with the teacher. The teacher would say, "Go home tonight and look at these two or three videos." As people get more experienced with this, they find that the shorter the video, the better. If I asked you to watch a 30-minute one, it wouldn't do so hot. If I asked you to do a series of two or three or four-minute ones, you could. And bear in mind that if you miss something in this, you can swipe back and play it again, and swipe back and play it again. That's the beauty of these things. And it need not be something like Khan Academy. Many teachers are filming their own lessons and then easily posting those online and then letting kids watch those at night ahead of time. Again, the concept of the original learning takes place at night.
X plus 8 is less than or equal to 6. And graph the solution. So we have x plus 8 is less than or equal to 6. So let's solve this inequality for x. And the easiest way to isolate an x on, let's isolate on the left-hand side since it's already there, is to just get rid of this 8. And the best way to get rid of this positive 8 is to subtract 8 from both sides. So let's subtract 8 from both sides. That won't change the direction of the inequality. So the left-hand side, x plus 8 minus 8, you're just left with an x. The right-hand side, 6 minus 8 is negative 2. And we still have the less than or equal. So we solved the equality. We have x is less than or equal to negative 2. So let's draw that on a number line. So let's, so that's my number line. Let's stick the zero over here. Maybe if we go 1, and then we could go negative 1, negative 2, negative 3. And we could keep going to the left. And we want all the x's that are less than or equal to negative 2. Since it can be equal to negative 2, we'll put a filled-in line right here at negative 2 and all of the values less than that. If it was just less than, if there wasn't the equal sign, we would have an open dot. But since it's less than or equal to, we've closed this dot. And then we want all of the values below that, all of the values below that. And you could just sample a few and verify for yourself that they work. Based on this, negative 3 should work. And if you took negative 3, negative 3 plus 8 is 5, which is definitely less than 6, so that works. And negative 1 shouldn't work. It's not included in this set over here. So let's try that out, negative 1. Negative 1 plus 8 is 7, which is definitely not less than 6. So just sampling some points, it seems like we've got the right solution.
So again, that's just one example. And as I said, I've worked with people in the past that have done this flipped approach. And he did not use Khan Academy. I did it a couple of my other colleagues, mainly because it wasn't so well-known at that point. But he videotapes himself and posted those lessons, talked about what they were going to do the next day in class and what may help them prepare and things of that sort. It's a real amazing thing to watch when you walk into that classroom after you know they've done all their work, you know, all their research ahead of time. You can walk in and truly see engaged students, so.
I'll share the next set of slides. And S-Back Computer Adaptive Testing, Kim?
So as we practiced last year, working with a smarter balance of assessments, it's all computer-based. Everything is there. The students have to do everything that they're doing on the computer, which again is another moving forward. But it's tailored to the individual student. I know that Mrs. Vissachek was up here last year going over and giving you test options and showing you exactly what it would take for the students when they're going through it. Just for your own knowledge, the ACT is going to that direction as well. They're ready to go to be computer-based so that they're looking for pilot sites to test out their tests. SAT is headed that way. They're not going to be far behind that. And ACT is already computer-based, again, tailored to the individual student. So we are moving forward, just even with assessments, college assessments.
Thanks, I'm shifting to the second slide in this series of four, I think it is. Again, I mentioned this earlier. We need to radically expand beyond the 7:30 to 2 and 10 months per year year. I think most of your polls indicate you are already aware of that. And so I'm not going to spend much time there, the value of formative assessments. And so there is a shift away today from the Credit Hour slash Carnegie unit towards the concept of mastery of standards. Now let me give you an example. If a student comes in ninth grade and they're just awesome at Spanish 1, right now, our structure is they will start Spanish 1 in September and they'll finish in June. What's to say that we couldn't allow that student to speed through and perhaps finish in February? If they met the standards, why couldn't we give them their credit in February and say, "Okay, man, now charge on to Spanish 2"? There's no reason at all. And couldn't we apply that to Algebra and English and everything else? Because really what we're concerned about is that they meet the standard, not that they sit in that seat for 10 months, okay? And you can imagine how that would radically change a couple of things. Some kids that really like something would speed through that course because they love it, whatever. There's kids that love every aspect of the education up at the high school. They would speed through that. They'd be hungry for more. Could kids graduate in three years? Absolutely. Would we want them to? Why not? Why not? Again, it's my opinion, we are holding kids back by the current model. The personalized learning plans, I think what we have to go to is when those kids come up in ninth grade, we have to really look at all aspects of them and design a program, starting with interest surveys, what they might like. And we design perhaps, some students might, we might say, you know, you really need to be with a teacher. You're struggling in literacy and numeracy. We're going to schedule you for pretty much all face-to-face classes. Other students might be ahead of the curve. Their plan might be something like 80% face-to-face, 20%, we're going to give you some blended learning. And then as they get older and more mature, that plan will deviate more and more per student. But the idea is that it's personalized when they first enter the high school. I think one-to-one programs are expensive, but there are ways to mitigate the costs. And here's a big one, eliminating textbooks. Now, originally, when you looked at e-textbooks, there was only marginal savings there. A company might publish a $100 biology book, for example, and they'll sell you the e-text for $90. You can access at home. You don't have to lug that 40-pound rucksack through the hallways, which many of our kids do. But it's not much of an advantage. The shift nowadays is towards one of two models. Assembling your own open-sourceware that is up to date and aligned to the curriculum. I mean, you know how accessible the internet is. Another model is you can construct your own textbook using various apps out there, like iBook, for example. You can actually build it and construct a textbook online, which is very easily editable. And over time, that can save tens of thousands. In my former school, I gave the teachers two-years' notice. And I said, "Two years hence, I'm not ordering any more textbooks." The math department was ahead of the curve. My last year there, they had no textbooks. Everything for them was online, so it's very doable. The next is something called a learning management system. This is a program where you disseminate information to your kids and collect work from your kids, correct, you communicate. It's a clearinghouse. They're called learning management systems. You might have heard of Edmodo, Courseral, Schoology, et cetera. Another thing I told this faculty a year in advance, I said, "One year, no more copies. I'll give you 100 copies per teacher, per month, for, you know, any personal stuff you need, but the worksheet, after worksheet, after worksheet, gone." English teachers, and I said to them, "If you're really stuck on it and you really think you can only correct with pencil and paper, you may print it at your own, you know, in your own and correct it then. You're just going to have to scan it in and send it back." And the department chair said, "I don't want to have to correct online." And I said, "You don't. You can print everyone and correct it yourself if you want." He said, "But I don't want to have to print everyone." I said, "Well, you don't have to do that either. You can correct online." He was like, "Oh, oh, oh," you know? So we will adapt, and this takes advantage of a fabulous resource for us. The point is, I don't know what our budget for copy paper is. This can reduce it. Communication, here's one right off the bat. We spent, I can't remember the exact figure, $7,000, $9,000 for our handbooks. Now, we need a place to lay out all the rules for kids, the legal requirements, plus good to have, gone. Online thing, there's $9,000 right there, thousands of dollars. Every communication we have when we send a mailing, progress reports, report cards, online to kids. If they had that resource, we can just shoot it out to them online. That was another thing we did in the former district. You know, after my first year there, nothing went out in the mail. I mean, there were occasions where people requested it. We'd honor that request, but it was very limited. People just got used to it. So you can mitigate the cost. So to finish up, I do have a final polling question for you. I think it's urgent that we change our thinking about technology. To me, technology is not a bell or whistle that would be nice to have. If we're not integrating technology fully, to me, it's equivalent to not teaching English in high school. We're holding our kids back. They're graduating from us at a tremendous disadvantage because their peers, more and more, are integrating technology in every respect of their lives. So I think it's critical. So one more polling question for you. Okay, so I'll share the results. I think that just shows you yours, but this shows me all of them again. One of the reasons I love this is I can just do this and get a quick scan on where everybody is. And so the last one, questions?
So first, let me say, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this, but I do have some questions. but I do have some questions about it. The first is recognizing that we are a district with quite a few families in financial need and marrying that against the desire to have the flipped classroom where you want students to be doing this work at home. How are you going to account for the fact that a lot of these students aren't going to have the access at home?
We took several wages today on whether or not that would be the first question. I lost. I thought it'd be cost. Several things. One is there are, I forgot the name of it, not Cox, but one of the other services.
Conca.
Oh, Conca, right. Does have for people with free and reduced lunch, a $9.95 per month internet access deal. There's some very minor circumstances. You can't have been with them for three months prior to that, things like that. But if you don't otherwise have them, you can get it at a tremendously reduced price. And there are ways to, in some way, pre-record that particular video for the student so they need not have online access. For example, if you say, I need you to watch these three videos. If you have a learning management system, you can send it to them for storage on their device or give them what's now an outmoded technology, flash drives and things like that. Because now everything's online. You send it to them, they store it, they watch it on the computer and go from there. So we recognize that's a problem.
There's also in the public library and other kind of hotspots in town too, that coffee shops and things like that, that they would be able to access as well.
Okay, thanks. My second question is the idea of a one-to-one device. Do you see that as a device that they would only have on school property or do you see that as a device they would take home with them?
The latter. And some schools, and this is what I would advocate for, say, and keep it over the summer. One, that maximizes the opportunity for learning because my hope is that we do a blended learning summer school next year. And they are more likely to integrate that technology. There's a whole host of questions raised. For example, won't a student be more likely to get on Facebook during class time? I broaden that question. To me, it's a question of engagement. If they have a device, it'll more likely be trying to get on Facebook or bypass the security filter. But if that student is going to be disengaged, you know, there's ways to be disengaged nowadays. For example, people are worried about text messages at school now. In our day, it was notes, you know? So kids are going to be kids forever. So it's not the particular way they're going to be an adolescent. It's just we recognize they're still going to be adolescents.
And because I know other districts in Connecticut have done this, are you at all worried about the fact that these devices can and will disappear?
Yes, no question about it. I mean, that's a fact. Kids being kids, there's damage. I used to look at every damage report in my former school and, you know, I was sitting on the bed and forgot it was there and I sat on it. I was fighting with my little brother and he knocked off. I mean, it's all very human and realistic things. There's typically insurance policies that cover such things. And they, just like our auto insurance, they weigh two things, premium and deductible. And you can get them as low as, some districts have them in the $30 range. The insurance policies for a little higher deductible. Some of them have a higher premium and a lower deductible. So I think ours was about a $75 premium with, as I recall, a $50 or $100 deductible, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bush?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a little more information. I went to a workshop a few years ago at the Cabe Conference, and they spoke about this. And one of the things they said was when a student is given the iPad or whatever it is, technology, to have, the likelihood of them destroying it or using it inappropriately is less likely. And they found that when it's just, you know, used like a textbook, they found it being damaged and not treated as respectfully as it would be if it was their device. And, you know, they said they've proven it through many different studies and things like that. So, you know, they've been talking about this years ago, about having the device over our own device even.
Do you also have any questions? Mr. Kalina?
How would this impact with bringing your own device technology? Would you be forced to use the school-provided device? Or could you actually bring your own technology and add a different type of computer or handheld device?
It's certainly easier when you all have the same platform and can operate and interact with the same way. I think that's a strategic question. I think it would probably replace the BYOD because there'd be no need for it. I mean, certainly tonight, while we were here trying to set all this up and looking at networks, I had my iPhone out and we could access it with the iPhone. So it was sort of a microcosm example, but I think it would be a shift away from it.
Additionally, you're, I was thinking, a better challenge might be is not to move the kids to the next grade or graduate them sooner, but actually drill down a little bit deeper with the information presented so it would challenge them for a longer period of time and not blow through a course very quickly because it's an area of particular interest or enjoyment. You could actually challenge the student a little bit more and give them the opportunity to fully explore the, not technology, but the subject matter. And also, following on to the damaged, lost computer scenario, what would happen to the data that the student was creating? Would it automatically back up to the cloud? Or would it be on his device as he's working on it? And if he fails to back it up, would all this work be lost?
Super question. With the movement towards use of the cloud, it's, most of it is deformer. Most learning management systems save things on the cloud. Google Docs is a great example. The old model was everything's on your computer. And if you lost your computer, you're up the creek, you know? Or if you lost a flash drive or something like that. Now, you might forget your password. You just ask them to reset it now that your stuff's available to you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any, Mr. Kim?
I'd like to ask about the at-risk students and how you feel this would work to their advantage.
For us, it's a combination of a couple of things. One is engagement. For a lot of our at-risk kids, the threshold issue is engagement. School doesn't apply to them. Why do I have to take algebra, things like that? I'll let you judge for yourself how much more likely it, kids will be engaged when they have devices in front of them. And I'm confident in the answer to that. Kids are attracted to technology, you know? I mean, I was maybe late in converting to reading the New York Times online, you know, very late. Now, it's just about all I read is online, not kids. They take to things like this very, very, very quickly. I practiced this presentation to my son on Saturday. He was zipping and then whoa, 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 let me get to the next, you know? They just take to it. Same with at-risk kids. And as Mr. Kalina said, I think this gives us the opportunity to drill down because a lot more data is immediately available to us. I mean, if I'm in a class and I see that, you know, the rugged movie star Dave Kaye is struggling, I'll spend more time with that person. And I might go over to others and say, you guys forge ahead. I'm going to make the next one available to you, et cetera. So I think it's fabulous for kids at risk. I think it's fabulous for those kids who want to charge ahead and do their own thing, as Lindsay said, a lot of the AP kids do.
Well, I think that's probably my greatest concern is, you know, the proof of the pudding is being charged to us and reducing the gap, let's call it, or gaps. And if the kids who will jump on this willingly move forward and the kids at risk don't, the gap widens, right? Or gaps. And naturally, we wouldn't want to avoid that. But we also want to bring these at-risk kids forward. And as many times as I see them banging a hotkey because I might be looking at what they're doing, they're not doing what the course is expecting of them. They're off, you know, doing whatever they want to do.
Right.
And they're not learning what they should be.
Well, I agree with you on all those points. I will say that one of the aspects of differentiated instruction is if we have some kids that are charging ahead and we have the ability via technology to let them charge ahead, I, as a teacher, can spend more time with that student that really needs the help. You know, one, to keep them engaged and two, to assist them with their intellectual struggle.
Mrs. Bush?
Kind of to add on to what Mr. Kalina was saying, when the student is getting through their courses quicker, that might give them the opportunity to take ECS courses, which would give them college credit without having to pay the college fees, which would give them a nice basis of the core courses that they might need to be able to get through college quicker, which, the price of college these days, that would benefit them. Maybe not to graduate them earlier, but give them opportunities to build up their core courses for college, is what I'm seeing of this being a benefit. And agreeing with what you were saying, giving the teacher more time to work with the at-risk student or the struggling student and letting the students that are grasping the information work a lot quicker and get to the ECS courses and the AP courses to get college credit. I think that would be fabulous to help keep things really rolling in these days, college course costs for students to be able to get into, be a sophomore when they hit college or even have their associate's degree. My nephew did that. He actually left high school with an associate's degree.
Well, first off, I want to congratulate the high school for bringing this to us. I just think that, you know, this is thinking outside the box. When you get a book in school, all you can do is look at that book. And if it's not in that book, you're limited. If you get something like this, you can take your research a ton further. You can, you could go, you can have three books, you know, or three different, you know, volumes of information on this type of device. You're not limited to one newspaper. You could read all the newspapers. So I think, you know, there's a lot more abilities with the electronic device than there is with just a textbook, especially the 40-pounders. This is probably a half a pounder, so kudos. I think this is a great vision for the future.
Mr. Stansel?
Since you lost the bet, what do you anticipate the cost of a program like this might be?
Well, I wouldn't, in fact, I strongly advocate against trying to implement something like this right away. Like, right away to me is next September. That's right away. I would do it in a planful way. What I would do is I would put a device in the hands of all the teachers by September of next year, over the summer preferably, and then use extensive PD to expose the teachers to all, some of the things we went over tonight. I mean, I didn't, I learned about NearPod as I was casting around to my friends. Hey, I got to make a presentation to the board and a friend told me about this application. So I learned it and put this together on Saturday. That's how quickly you can do it. But, you know, I have a sense for technology. Not every teacher does. So what I would recommend is something like putting a device like this in front of every teacher next year with planful PD. And I think this is not the newest model iPad. I think you can get the iPad, whatever number, not the newest one, for 400 bucks, times about 100 teacher. That's about 40 grand for next year. And then some PD. Most of that we can do internally so there's not extra cost for that kind of stuff. But really, the big nut would be the following year. Two ways to go, purchase or lease. There's different lease options. I don't know that I would want to phase something like this in because that might work for, you know, all the grade nine science classes in English and math that everybody takes, but it would not do well for the electives. So they would be really, really far behind. So there's different costs for leases. I think one of the ones Mr. Lamoy looked at for me was if you got a lease for 1,100 students with the iPad plus a smart case, and I would recommend instead a hard keyboard with, a hard case with a keyboard and something called Apple Care, which is basically a servicing thing, about $153 per student per year. So 168,000. And in a budget our size, is that again a big nut? It's a big nut. But again, I look at not only the expense. And again, my numbers, you know, I mean, those are approximate. So it's a big nut. But I think if we start planning for that now, for budgeting and implementation for the next school year, not this one coming up, not the 14, 15 school year, the 15, 16 school year, my hope is we could do it.
I am glad to hear you mention the keyboard case because that was going to be my one comment. I, this is what I do all day. And I can tell you from the business perspective that trying to work on one of these full-time without some type of keyboard is a nightmare.
Right.
And I love them, but still.
Right. We would expect kids to compose and submit papers on these, entirely on these. It takes a little bit of getting used to because the keyboard's smaller. But I leave this at work. This goes with me everywhere. It's just so useful. I can use the swiping, I can compose stuff.
Mr. Kalina?
That was partially answered my question, but can I take that a little bit further about the teacher training and infrastructure? What's the issues in terms of setting up an infrastructure? Was the problem during the course of a classroom lesson or differentiated learning and teacher has some technical difficulty? What kind of resources would they require? Would they be able to solve them themselves? Or would there be somebody within the school that could give them additional assistance if they ran into further troubles?
So a couple of things. All of you, I think, know, being involved in education, that technology can mess up. We ran across that tonight. And was I sitting here when this started like this? You know, I was, but I had a plan otherwise. And that's what teachers would do. So on a day-to-day basis, they're going to have to be prepared because things happens with technology. My understanding is the wireless network at the high school's in pretty good shape. I think the primary issue would be day-to-day technical support for some of those issues. And I say technical support, sort of the tactical ones, like I can't connect to my projector or my Wi-Fi doesn't seem to be working. And there's strategic ones, how do I best use technology? Ultimately, what I think we should go to for the latter is a national course called Gen Yes, which is student-centered technical support, not only for, where students help teachers incorporate technology. They show them how to run the programs. They show them how to use it in their classrooms. But also, the second year of that curriculum, they learn how to be the technical assistants for it. Do I think it would increase our technical assistance requirement to high school? Very clearly.
Olivia?
I just wanted to say that I think this is a great idea coming from like an actual high school student. I know that personally, like, resources such as buying your own laptop, not many people are able to do that unless they are really into like graphic design or find one really cheap. But I think it really does make you more college-ready. Not only would you be able to take AP courses, like last year, filling out the bubbles and be like, wait, that's an AP course I could have taken, but it wasn't offered at your school. You could take that online or you could do the blended learning. That's a great opportunity for those kids who do want to excel. And personally, I know kids who, if they had had this, they probably would have graduated high school as a sophomore. I mean, you've met the people I'm talking about. And so I think it's a great opportunity for those who really want to excel. And because I know that was one of my issues with the Common Core standards is, and a lot of other kids, you know, how are the ones who are going to excel? How are they going to be able to do that? And so I think that's a really good aspect. And it'll prepare kids to go, when you go to college, you need a computer and you need to take notes on it. You need to follow lectures. You need to be able to do all of these things. And integrating it in earlier is really beneficial. And I still, I know you kind of touched upon this, I know you kind of touched upon this, but a couple of weeks ago, I brought up how my teacher has a smartboard. It still hasn't been turned on. So I really think that professional development needs a lot of work if you're going to put this in.
Mrs. Bush.
Have you looked into possible grants that are available for funding, outside funding, putting this in place as well?
I have not. I'm sure, you know, we'd do that, but...
I think we've covered it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
It was fun and interesting, and it's great. Thank you. We're ready to move on to Item 5.2, District Improvement Plan and School Improvement Plans. Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher.
You have copies. We're trying to create a format and obviously trying to align them even more than they have been before, these improvement plans. You know that the board's Goal 2 was all based on the goals that you had set, that you had passed probably a month and a half, almost two months ago. The board has three goals. Again, the first one had to do with family and community, and the second is academic success and curriculum and/or curriculum assessment and instruction, or curriculum instruction and assessment, as I call Mr. Burt as the CIA director. And then the third one is the social, emotional, and physical health of our students, in terms of how they are accessed, what they are doing. I'm going to assume that you have read these, and I don't, you know, I want to go through each one. I certainly can if you wish. But you can see we have tried to codify. That's relatively new in trying to do that. We've tried to codify the indicators of success as specific as we can. Some of them are still, we did it, check it off. But I think we certainly moved in that direction. Some of them have an increase of 15%. Some of them have a growth of more than one year. So there are a number of things. And what is your pleasure, Mrs. Fisher?
First of all, I don't have Maple Street.
No, Maple Streets is not in there. They are in process with their building leadership team, and they will be bringing it to their first meeting. She'll be bringing everything to you. The two... We have two reports tonight. The School Improvement Plan and the School Governance Council. She'll be bringing all of that to you.
Well, we'll take questions again. Sorry, Ms... Mr. Kemp.
I really appreciate the common format. It makes it so much easier to go over this and make some judgments from it. On Center Road, I'd just like to ask the... On page three of Center Road, where it refers to a 10% decreases in officer referrals, but it doesn't tell us from what point.
Mrs. Poglisch is here. Mrs. Fisher, may I have her?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Poglisch.
Hi. So your question was where... Well, I'm assuming your question is where are we starting from?
Yes.
A decrease, getting a decrease in that. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I could get that information to you, but I don't have the number. It really would be going from where we ended last year and by the end of this year, having 10% less than where we ended in June of last year. But I would have to get that number to you.
Well, it's just to look at in the future. When we see where we are, we know where we started, and I don't know that. It's one of the... Be inclined to save this for next time.
Right.
And then see where we are.
Absolutely. No, and that's certainly something... I could even update this plan to include that information so that when you see it, you'll know where we started and whether or not we met the goal of 10% decrease.
Thank you. But I also wanted to say, I thought your report was fairly complete. For instance, in your climate survey results, you have what I would consider some examples that some of the other schools should follow. I would like to think that all of these reports would be shared with each elementary school in particular, so that each principal can see what the other schools chose to identify, some of the ideas that are inside the reports, and just build on the best practices of each elementary school because I see some strengths in each report. They're different, but they deal with things a little differently from one to another, and that's not bad. But if they don't get the opportunity to see what the other principals have put together, that would be an opportunity missed.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp, the five elementary principals worked on their plans together, which is why there's so much similarity. The numbers would definitely be different. The indicators would be different, depending on what their particular school climate survey had said last year. And so that would account for the differences, but that also accounts for the similarities in terms of the objectives and the areas of focus.
Okay. Well, let me say that in the area of similarities, where the objective one is foster partnerships with parents and community. That's consistent with each elementary school. But it's only Northeast that goes on to say, "And support for at-home learning." I mean, I think that's really important, and yet it's missing in the other elementary schools. And I think it ought to be an objective for each elementary school or any school, and support for at-home learning. And it just isn't in the other objectives.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Arm. I think we had a brief discussion about the validity of the surveys that are being returned. And since so much is riding on those results, I hope that there'll be discussion about other ways to gather the information or to compile the information. We did acknowledge that the survey could actually be completed a number of times online, if somebody chose to that. Some principals were using events in the school to capture parents and get answers to surveys. And I think we should spend a little time trying to secure the validity of the surveys that we're getting because the information is so important. And I wonder about compiling the survey results. Maybe that's a function that the school governance councils could do as well because it would be a combination of teachers and administrators, parents, and community leaders, assuring that the results are accurate and appropriate later. I know that when we talked about it before, Mr. Cool suggested Survey Monkey.
One of them. That's what we used.
But we also agreed that there is room for discrepancies in the surveys. I hope that some... I don't have the answer to that, but I'm hoping that there'll be some discussion and some consideration for changing the mode of the survey.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Kemp? Mr. Moon.
I would like to ask a similar question. You know, are we confident in the ability of the survey tool? And I thought it was Survey Monkey. In the ability to give us reliable information? Have we talked about that? Is there any other opportunities that may exist to sample and have more confidence in the data?
We could. We started this... My first year, I asked everyone to survey. Everyone, this is before we were required. And because of previous work, I have access to this particular survey. So the instrument itself is reliable and has gone through all of the testing data. And so we have not changed that. Once we start changing it, it will no longer be reliable. But we certainly could. There's another instrument that is available free from the state, and so we'll be exploring that. But that would be to go forward. We then have to do baseline data again next fall with that one before we get results in the spring, which is also fine. I think we need to see if it serves our purpose. To use another tool, it will be expensive. We did it for free because I had access to that one, and we just did it on Survey Monkey, knowing that in Survey Monkey, you can go on multiple times, certainly. When we have our students do it, it comes up every time they open the screen during the testing or the survey window. So every time they want to go in and do something while they're in their computer or on their account, the survey comes up and they have to click it off. So could they take it multiple times? Yes, they could take it multiple times. I don't... I think it's probably more valid at the elementary schools that the teacher says, "All right, everybody click the X and move on." I don't know how many high school and middle school students want to take the survey multiple times, but yes, they could. They can also answer it any way they want. They don't have to answer it honestly. Those are results that we get. So... But we could do a survey that is not on Survey Monkey or pay for the... There's another version of Survey Monkey that costs money. We could do that, pay for that, and then only one person can take it. At the time, it gives us more options as well. But we did it this way because the finances, we had to do something.
As Ms. Arm was indicating, the fact that it is a, you know, such a tool that we're using for judging how we are doing. I know the numbers didn't give me the impression that we're getting multiple people doing the survey.
Right.
That's not... But it is the, you know, wanting to try to get as accurate a video as possible. And that was really concerning, the fact that, you know, there isn't any way to...
There is not, but we have right now.
Any other questions, Mr. Kemp?
In VCMS's report on Goal 2, there's a reference on literacy, second from the bottom. Just one word, I'm not sure what that... Goal 2 on literacy, second goal from the bottom, it just says the word "students."
That belongs on the previous. It's at-risk student, medium for all high and medium-risk students. And it goes on the previous line.
Just a continuation of the line. We will fix that. It should have a log there.
Oh, all right. Thank you. And the reference in both cases to the Common Core standards, what group are we wanting to identify? Needing to increase their understandings? Is this for the teaching staff or parents or...?
That would be teaching staff. Still have a long way to go.
The parents are already under the Goal 1.
Okay. That's right. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Arm.
Would you entertain motion to request that the superintendent investigate other modalities, survey modalities, and report those modalities and costs associated with them?
Any one second there? Mr. Stansel? Any discussion, questions? Mr. Kemp?
I'm not sure what the motion is asking for. Could we clarify that?
Asking the superintendent to research other forms of surveys that might be...
Is this the... May I ask a clarifying question? Thank you. Is this the technical way of doing it? Like, using Survey Monkey and using that? Or is it the specific survey?
An issue with the survey, the material that you want to generate...
How we're implementing the survey.
How we're going to do it.
Thank you.
You said that you were familiar with other options, but there was a cost attached to them. So if you could just report the options with the costs.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Moon.
I'm going to support your motion because I think, you know, just it doesn't hurt to, well, figure out what our options are as far as being able to do this survey with a little bit more reliability. Only because of the Survey Monkey, we know that it, you know, you can do it multiple times, and it's not as reliable.
Any other discussion, Mrs. Bush?
I just want to make sure that whatever you look at is easily accessible by the parents because one of my concerns is that the parents might not have as much opportunity to complete the survey. So I want to make it user-friendly for the parents because they're the ones who are possibly... Would struggle more with a survey.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to ask the superintendent to look into other options to technically survey to our parents, staff, and students. And there's a second. I'll look at it here. I just have one question for Mrs. Poglisch. Center Road School, under MATH. So this would be Goal 2. Indicators of success. Since the end of the year, mathematical performance task. All students will show a gain of at least one point in their Rubrik score. How many points are there in Rubrik? I don't know if one point's a lot or it's a little.
I think, well, it's a new... This is actually a new performance task for this year, and the Rubrik score goes from zero to three. So it's a four-point scale. So we're looking for them. And it measures the mathematical practices that every student should know. So each task, even though the question is different, it's measuring their ability to apply those principles. So we're looking for them to show a gain of at least one point in their Rubrik score by the end of the year.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll look forward to hearing about direct surveys. That is a survey. Okay, we'll move on to Item 5.2. Please report on School Governance Councils. Dr. Korn.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. I've given you each report that came from the school. Some of them are minutes and encapsulations of agendas and things like that. But I gave you a quick overview at the beginning. They were all supposed to have been established by November 1st and have a first meeting by December 1st. You can see all that up Maple Street. We were in flux up Maple Street at that point. And so Mrs. Gandoff is working on that right now. We actually discussed it this afternoon again to move forward. So they should be established in January and have their first meeting in February. And if we can do it all in one month, we certainly will do that. There are people coming forward at this point. You can see that you know that the board, meaning administration, is responsible for training and each building, excuse me, each school governance team met and determined how they were going to learn. Some locals, they had people using PowerPoints that were presented, discussions. So there were different things. And I just gave you some of the next steps that they were doing. Many of them are looking at bylaws. Most of all of them, school improvement plans before they came here. That was one of the first things on their first agenda. So there are a lot of the different things. And we have several principals, six of the seven principals, five of the seven principals. Mr. Harrison is at Mrs.... Mrs. Stansel, she's waiting.
And Mr. Now.
Quick question, not pertaining to one of the schools, but the training material, the correct material. Is that call point something that the board can see? Just so we have an understanding of what these people are being trained or how they're being instructed and what their role and responsibility is compared to a board role and responsibility. I know I had the advantage of sitting through a governance council discussion at CAE, but I'm sure other board members could benefit from some of that insight as well. And I'm just thinking, if there is a presentation available, maybe... And I'm just thinking, if there is a presentation available, maybe, you know, if we saw it, it'd be helpful for all of us as well. People disagree, tell me on what.
Actually, the entire link is in one of the, what's going on at CAE that comes out in a month or several weeks, and so I can send you that link. I'll send the entire board that link. If you wish to have another presentation on it, you can certainly do that here as well. And if we can make it available to the public, on the regular website. Does anybody have any other questions?
Just one observation. It seems that each of the groups is selecting a community member, and the bylaws, I think, allow for up to two. I think only one of those.
That's correct.
Yeah, so they, and the other suggestion is that they have staggered terms rather than have everybody turn over all at once. They could easily, you know, put one year, two year, three year, something like that, so they don't have turnover all at one point in time.
Mrs. Arm? Some of the schools mentioned bylaws, writing them, reviewing sample bylaws. I thought, looking for clarification, I thought bylaws were provided by the state. There's a little bit of personalizing, but the government councils aren't writing bylaws, are they?
I think that they're amending them, they're looking at the ones that are provided and making sure they work for them.
Okay, well, some of the notes said that they would be writing bylaws, and I just want to be sure that we're really all on the same page in using the state-provided bylaws.
Any other questions? I just have one. Is there a mandatory number of people that need to be on the school governance council of each school or no? There are, help me, principal, seven teachers, five parents, and two, pardon?
Seven parents.
Seven parents, five teachers, sorry about that, and two community members. And you can actually have one or two students. Two students. Well, the reason I ask is Lake Street has a very small group, and I do know they're still looking for members. They are trying to be cautious. I know Mrs. Wenzel has done that. And actually, Mr. Rocket has more than the required people, and he didn't want to say no to anyone, and so, and they were all approved. And so his assumption was that they would be either attrition or not everyone could make it in the meeting, so he'd have the right number of people, so he created to make it smaller. So those that are missing members are still looking for? Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing more. Item 5.4, Magnet School. You have a new spreadsheet that I think might be a little more clear in your yellow folder. All right, it's all on that blue now. So if you would remove that from the folder and share.
Okay, this is an update to the spreadsheet that was previously provided. One important difference, if you notice in the total charges there, the last column, sorry, the last two columns, you'll notice that the total number of students charged differs from the number of students enrolled for the same date, November 1st. For instance, go down to the second row, Discover Academy. What was unknown to me when I first provided you with this spreadsheet is that the pre-K students were not charged to the district, that those are charged to the state. So that is for the significant difference in the total tuition at the bottom. So that is new information to me. I apologize if that was not provided before. And one exception, all the way down at Magnet School for the Arts, one student did move out of district, so we are no longer there, LEA. So that was one difference there for total, I believe, of 10 students difference between the two numbers. So if you look the last three columns, you'll see November first enrolled in these schools, then what we've been charged, and then the total invoice. Down in the second part there, you'll notice that three of those invoices have not been given to us yet, and we'll get that information as soon as possible. We don't anticipate there'd be too many differences with those. So you go to the second page, you see three rows. Again, it was the initial enrollment and tuition from last year, from October 1st. From October 1st of this year, the anticipated enrollment and tuition, and then the actual to date, November 1st, enrollment and tuition costs to the district with a deficit of $25,000 approximately. The board also asked, I'll entertain questions on that if you'd like, but the board also asked for some survey data. I can provide that if there's no questions on the spreadsheet.
Any other questions, Mr. Kim?
Just from the accounting mechanics, when a student returns to us, let's say three months into the year, comes back to Vernon, what, if any, fee is returned back to us?
We are looking, that was the question that I have as well, and I don't know the answer to that, but I am looking into that as to whether or not it's appropriated or not. So right now, all these invoices are dated November 1st, and so it's the actual enrollment at that time. So I do not have an answer for you, but I am interested in that. If we have a student return to us in January, do we get a appropriated amount as well? Or is our bill appropriated?
I appreciate that you're looking into it. It must be an area-wide situation where other school systems have similar events happening, and I would like to think that there were some ground rules set up in the beginning because, as you all know now, we weren't part of the negotiation with the prices or the terms of payment or any of those stipulations when it came to being charged to these things. So hopefully, at the state level, we can clarify what funds would be due back to us without having to be in a negotiating position with CREG or one of the other organizations through the superintendent's association or somebody other than us doing a one-on-one request of CREG to return money to us.
Well, all I can say is that my assistant is on the top of this, and if we do have any returning students, that is made aware to us and that we will pursue that individually. I'm not aware of any global approach to this for other districts. I am in various groups, so I'll ask those other assistant superintendents and directors of curriculum when I meet them shortly. I'm actually having a meeting Thursday with a group, so I'll ask them what their approach has been. It's for the CREG region, actually, so that's a good group to ask. One of the things that we have been doing with these invoices is that we've been confirming that the folks that we have on our list or the folks that they have on their lists, who they have on this, to make sure that we're getting accurate invoices. So we are staying on top of this as best as possible, and we'll pursue that question.
Well, I can assure you, coming back from the CAE conference, that this is not a unique Vernon problem and that you will have support from other towns that are, let's call them sending towns to Magnet Schools. So any requests, you don't feel that you're alone.
Thank you.
Did you want to go on with the survey?
Thank you. Yes, we did ask the folks, the students that did return their families to respond to a survey, and we had five responses. And because of the nature of the responses, I do not feel it's appropriate to share because of some identifying information. What I can give you is some more general information. The questions were very basic. What school did you originally enroll in? Which school are you returning to here in Vernon? And then, more importantly, some of the reasons why you chose Magnet School versus why you returned. Overall, the choices to go to Magnet School were for choice in terms of the content, the curricula, specific things, for instance, like a career. And one of the other pieces was a full-day kindergarten. And one of the responses for returning back to Vernon was, we did introduce full-day kindergarten. Two of the five responses indicated that what was promised in the Magnet School was not what actually their student encountered in those schools. And one response did indicate that they felt like coming back to, that in particular the middle school, they felt like they were getting better information about the middle school and about the quality of the program there, and that they made that choice to return back to the middle school. We are still pursuing a student's return. We will continue to pursue the survey, but obviously you can't force people to make the survey. But that is important information.
If you don't mind, I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Barrett. In your yellow folder, you have a postcard that is going out from the middle school designed by our teacher, Sherry Evans. This is, we were not able to have our recruitment night this fall, but this is going out. And Mr. Harrison has already gone to all the PTOs or most of them. You can see the, you know, it's called an evening of exploration. It's not just called the old open house. And the pictures on the front are quite enticing. These are all kids. They tried to make the pictures kids who are there now as opposed to last year's eighth graders. And all of the activities and academics, and they're quite delighted. So this is going out to every fifth grade family that we have here in town, and there are a few others as well. So we're quite delighted.
Mr. Barrett, and Mr. Wilson.
I would also suggest that even though some of the students currently be there, I would suggest maybe sending them out to existing students that will be at VCMSS next year as well, just to kind of keep them in stable, staying in school as close to. It isn't so much the night itself, but it's something to keep them coming back to the school instead of looking at opportunities. Can we do something to, if they've had a bad experience or something for student retention, I guess is probably the better way to call it.
Magnet School. That comes back to money again. That's a great idea. I love it. And I'd also like to, as you were speaking, I first thought you were talking about all of our students who are middle schoolers who are out Magnet Schools or charter schools or private schools.
Oh, okay.
Because we have those students' addresses as well, and we certainly should do that. I know they ordered, I want to say, I can't remember how many they ordered. They ordered 100 more than they needed, and they used student activity monies, and they shopped around and got the cheapest price they possibly could. So if we were going to do that, that certainly adds, that probably triples because we're only talking about fifth grade, so that, well, it quadruples the amount that we need. So I think that's a great idea, though, coming forward. We can build it in next year's budget.
You know, I just think it evangelizes the schools, that what we do positively, what we do really well, to try and keep our student base as intact as possible and make it grow a bit.
That's a great idea. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Did you say that you will be sending to students who are in Magnet Schools now?
I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison, and he has enough for that. That would be terrific.
That's what he said, yeah.
Here.
I noticed that the open houses that the Magnet Schools are providing in the area include the VoAg facility in Suffield. And consequently, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be to our advantage to have our VoAg participate in their group open house events.
I did attempt that. I approached Hartford Public Schools three years ago to see if our VoAg could be a Magnet School in the same way that Suffield is. Hartford students have Suffield at VoAg as a choice school, and I said I would like our VoAg to be a choice school too, and I was turned down by the Hartford Public Schools. So it's a designation that we don't choose. They get to decide who their partners are. And unfortunately, ours was not chosen. So I thought it would be great to have extra, another VoAg because they have different areas of expertise. I thought it was a marvelous match, and I will try to do it. I spent three years. Persistence. But that's a lie. All right, thank you. Moving on to Item 5.5, report from Board of Education members on CAE convention.
All right. I printed off a copy of the material that I had received from CAE and asked Trish to put it into everybody's yellow folder this evening, so there should be a copy of the presentation in there. And I'm not going to go, you know, braid through this thing, but it was an interesting presentation, special education, and how, you know, a lot of districts are struggling with the same things that we're struggling on as far as cost. And some of the things that are being done relative to trying to address that cost. And just for your information, I did also send it to Patty, so if we had any specific questions that she may be able to address or say, oh, yeah, we're doing that already, she'd be able to see it and speak to us as well. But there was just, there was a few things they talked about that were, what I found pretty interesting, you know, some of the spending things. You can see I circled a few of the items up around pages 18, 19, 17, 18, 19. But then they talked about, you know, some of our obligation and how much we're on the hook for, and those were the motivators for why they put on the presentation as far as coming up with ideas or ways to try and get additional monies or funding for this. And I guess it starts at around page 28. They put together an ECS task force to make some recommendations, and that was one of the things that they were saying, that, you know, boards of education could help out by, you know, asking our legislators to, you know, go along with some of the recommendations or help us advocate for these at state level across the state because of the shortfalls, you know, the... They actually had a couple of different recommendations here as far as how funding might be changed a little bit to better serve the boards of education. And like I said, these recommendations are out there, but they haven't been fully acted upon yet. So that's their task force, their ECS task force. And I think others heard some of the discussion activity on that. I don't know all the details, I didn't actually listen to the task force. But the, some of the key things that I think that they were talking about is the due process and the fact that, you know, one of the recommendations on the due process is to, you know, have Connecticut go along with many of the other states in the country, which push the burger proof to the moving party, as they call it. And it's basically, you know, right now, all a parent has to do is say they want services, and we have to prove that their child does need services. So the parents can be a lot more demanding now. And this due process was a big discussion point and the fact that, I guess after the courts changed the law, we had, the federal court changed the law, Connecticut had the opportunity to go on, go along with that change in the law to put the burger proof on the moving party, and state of Connecticut still has not gone along with that. We're one of, if you look at slide 41, we're one of only six states, Connecticut, Delaware, New Jersey, New York, Nevada, and West Virginia, that have, that we still maintain the burger proof. We have to prove that the child does need services. And that was something that they suggested that, you know, again, you know, continue to advocate for that through our folks in Hartford to try and help us get that changed through because that would save districts a lot of money. I think they, on page 42, they gave an estimate of 48 reporting districts that answered their survey. They felt that there was at least a $74,000 savings there. So they put together some stats, and that's why one printed out these slides, so you could actually see the stats that they provided and sent along. Some of the other areas that they're focused, that they're telling us to focus on in order to save and specialize, and Ms. Bule and her folks may be already doing this, but looking at reducing errors. They said that errors are costing districts a lot of money, and they've talked about getting, you know, how we do consistency in our training across all of the grade level, all of the like elementary schools, make sure everybody's doing things consistently. But they made mention of that, and I guess there's actually some reviews that are being done now to try and, you know, make sure that, you know... to try and, you know, make sure that, you know, the, these errors are reduced because it is something that costs boards of education some money. And like I said, I don't know for sure whether we've made any of these types of changes here. But it is something that, you know, Ms. Buehl's area could talk to. The other area that they talked about, which really kind of got interested in, this is something that, it's combining forces with other towns on different things. One of the areas that they talked about was special ed transportation, looking at special ed transportation. And instead of just taking and using your bus company to do special ed transport, look at the possibility of putting it out to bid and maybe going out with, you know, a couple of towns that are around you that are maybe sending kids in the same direction and see if we can get a better price or, you know, at least getting a bid on what it would cost for our services separate from what our normal bus contract is. They spoke about some fairly significant savings could be found there. I don't know that to be, you know, whether that would be something that we would be able to do here. But I thought it sounded good. They, let's see, they talk about that, some of the labor costs. These are things that I know we're doing right now. You know, where they talk about, you know, having some of your own expertise in-house, doing what we did with the Vernon Elementary at the high school, where we're now servicing more of our population and look for other opportunities to do that. Bring in the specialist instead of sending them out of town, you know, bring kids into town. Working with other towns nearby is, you know, they, I think it was slide 40, looks like 49, talks about being able to, no, that is, I was looking at. I apologize for my mark. But there's, I mean, towns can collaborate and they speak to the collaboration that, you know, towns can do things to collaborate on, you know, in order to reduce costs. And they actually, there is some legislation that was put in place. Oh, thank you, man. 61 is the slide that I was thinking of for collaboration in order to try and find ways to work with your neighbors to try and save you money. Just a bunch of good points there. And it was rather interesting. There was a lot of interesting dialogue throughout the, throughout the program. I'm just trying to see if there was anything else. Oh, the one other thing was the uniformed calendar they were suggesting is make sure your calendar lines up with your neighbor's calendar so that if you want to bring their kids into your program, if we do a special ed program, it aligns with their school calendar so that it's easier for those parents to agree to that type of situation. Whereas if we have different vacation schedules, which I know we have, I at times had that. I think now we're trying to line those things up, but I don't know how we align now. But that was just another thing that they mentioned, making sure that you do that so that you can take advantage of the collaboration. Just a lot of good points.
Just a quick question. I saw the possible savings for transportation. And I know we have a cooperative agreement with other towns in our transportation. Is that something we can look into to work with other towns to, you know, streamline our transportation? And possibly through that encourage these other towns to make use of Vernon Elementary?
So actually, excuse me, doing that already as best we can. We do share transportation with other towns. Our bus company actually puts students that go to several schools on the same bus in and out of town. Mr. Buehl, did you want to add to that at all? What we can do back?
We do certainly share transportation with several different communities. We have low student enrollment and out of district placements. So we often share rides with those districts. It is, does take some collaboration and it certainly is a cost savings. We're currently negotiating with an additional district on a student could potentially save upwards of five or six, seven thousand dollars for the remainder of this year. So we have, we have shared rides in a variety of settings.
With respect to the due process, you discussed, you said that the burden proof is on the Board of Education to approve otherwise. Is that following the diagnosis or testing on the district's part or did he?
I'm going to refer to Ms. Buehl because she's the expert, but it is on us, I know that.
It's on anything that the parent wants to, you know, on any issue that's raised that results in due process.
But is, does there have to be some kind of basis for that? Or can they just pull something out of the sky?
Typically, there's something that, there's some basis, but there are times that a case can be pulled kind of out of the blue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
No, that's all I have. But I just, you know, if you go through this and the attorneys that presented this were the attorneys for Wilkins School District out of Fermington. And they welcomed the comment, our questions, but they never provided any email. They don't have the email addresses on their website. So I think we have to go through Patty with questions that we have.
Okay, well, I, David spoke about one of the workshops that I had been to. But then this other one, David and Mary and I went to, and it was about increasing student achievement. It was put on by Windsor Locks superintendent and Board of Ed person. But it was very interesting and they are, they are an alliance district school. And they have made some big changes in the last two years. And they determined nine characteristics of what they wanted their schools to be, the high performing schools. And I'm going to share those with you. One is a clear and common focus, high standards and expectations for all, strong and effective leadership, supportive personalized and relevant learning, parent community involvement and collaboration, curriculum instruction and assessment aligned with higher standards, frequent monitoring and accounting of learning, focused professional development, and flexible use of time and structures. They do have two buses after school for the elementary schools and they have teachers that come in later in the day and stay later. And then they use their alliance district money to pay for those buses to transport the kids home. But they, they also are going to, and Mr. Rock referred to it tonight, a competency, competency based system rather than just getting number grades. The kids, how it is is the difference between students. Students must demonstrate in a variety of ways that the new learning can be applied and transferred to new and other learning rather than just regurgitating what they've learned as we all learned. And there would be new report cards. They would have things like phrases would be, they do not meet the goals, they partially meet it, they're meeting the standards, or they exceeding the standards. And they, Windsor Locks transcripts, it will reflect their achievement based on credits earned and numerical equivalents on a three to four point scale. But it sounds like there, and I think only a few towns in the state are doing that right now. So it did sound very interesting. It seems to go along with Conde Nast and everything else. But they, they have been making some big strides. Looks interesting.
That was all. Okay, we'll move on to 5.6, facilities report. You have in your yellow folder a revised 5.6 with a proposed motion about the school's security grant. And I turn this over to Mr. Kemp to talk a little bit about the meeting, but you have minutes in your packet that you've already approved. So I don't know how much detail, but Mr. Kemp, do you want to do this or do you like me to?
Well, I did have the opportunity to read the minutes of the meeting. And there were basically five areas that we covered in the two and a half hours, one of which was about a one hour tour that we took advantage of the opportunity to go through the inside and outside of the building, not unlike we had done years ago. I remember when Michelle Arnn and Chico Parent and I were crawling up in the rafters of Maple Street School. Maybe that was more than we needed to do, but he wanted to show us something up there. In any case, it, it brought home some interesting things that needed to be addressed. There was a lift for some ADA students on the main floor that needed to be repaired. We weren't aware of that. So things like that were brought to our attention as well as things that we knew about for some time, which were ADA issues relative to getting into the basement area where the cafeteria is. So that was productive and there were some action items taken by Mr. Kleins to address. And then the school's security was discussed. And apparently they, just to put it in a nutshell, the dollar amount that we should receive needs to be supplemented or a part of it should be covered by the locality. And in our case, it should be the town and the Board of Ed. So Michael has put together a fairly lengthy motion for you. And I see he supplemented that, which is found in your yellow packet. So Michael, if you would please, since you are the author of this, would you please go through it at this point?
Through the chair. The motion reads, and I think when the motion was crafted, it has all the information we have in there to take action. Hopefully will answer most of the questions that we've discussed this before in the previous finance reports. So the motion reads, whereas Vernon Public Schools submitted an application for funding as part of the state of Connecticut's school security competitive grant program, whereas the school's security competitive grant program is a component of Public Act 13-3 Gun Violence Prevention and Children's Safety Act that is administered by the State Department of Education and the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and is designed to reimburse municipalities for a portion of the costs associated with school security infrastructure improvements. Whereas the governor of the state of Connecticut announced that the town of Vernon is approved for $538,222 in total project funding for Vernon Public Schools, of which $386,394 or 71.79% shall be reimbursed by the state of Connecticut, leaving a balance of $151,828 to be paid by the town of Vernon. Whereas the Vernon Board of Education agrees to pay half of the municipal's local share requirement of the grant, excuse me, of the grant award. Therefore, in anticipation of receiving the formal grant award from the state of Connecticut, the Vernon Board of Education respectfully requests that the town of Vernon approve funding in the amount of $75,914 to pay for half of the municipal's local share requirement of the grant award. In addition, the Vernon Board of Education respectfully requests that the town of Vernon approve funding in the amount of $75,914 from the capital non-recurring education fund to pay for the remaining half of the municipal's local share requirement of the grant award.
So.
Is there a second, Mr. Kemp?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Concerns, okay. Motion on the floor to approve for this lengthy motion that Mr. Praghar has read. All those in favor? It's Janice.
Thank you. The meeting continued on. We talked briefly about an athletic Hall of Fame display at the high school that staff is recommending. And it seems that it's revenue neutral to us and it seemed appropriate that we let them go ahead. There was also a rather lengthy school roof survey report presented to us. And it is no small document. It was put together professionally and I forgot the name of the organization that did it. But in any case, it is quite revealing as to what is necessary to bring the seven roof conditions up to a point where the roofs should be. And I think some of the conversations have been held with the town at this point to make them aware of what the projected cost would be for all of this. The committee members each received a three ring binder, which goes over the extent to which the repairs and remediations would amount to. And the timing of getting it done should be over the next calendar year, 2014 and 2015. But they are not small items. And you're, you're welcome to inspect this three ring binder if you wish. But do you feel that we should be going over the dollar amounts in great detail? Or should I just summarize?
Isn't the committee going to discuss the report next time? So I think there may be more information than what's in the report in terms of dollar amounts. We may know more at that one.
Okay. And we'll leave it at that then. But I think it's important at this point for you to realize that there are substantial amounts of work that need to be done on several of the roofs that we have. And we'll leave it at that for now. And lastly, the committee went over some of the NEASC sections that had to do with facilities. And in the case where there were statements made in section seven of the NEASC report that we felt needed to be addressed by Mr. Kleins, he did. And I would also point out to you that sometimes in the report, particularly on pages 80 and 81, there was one position made clear. And yet on page 85 and 86, they pretty much contradicted what was said on page 80 and 81. So so much for committee work, I guess. But the point is that the items that needed to be addressed, I think, are, there was some clarification that was made. For instance, there was a reference to a comprehensive chemical plant. And I thought that maintaining MSDS was being done in a centralized manner. Apparently it wasn't. Also, I thought that a six-year capital improvement plan was the definition of a strategic capital plan. And NEASC does not agree with that. They feel that a strategic capital plan needs to be well beyond a six-year timeframe. So that's new to me, but new to us. And therefore, we will develop a longer term capital plan to accommodate the NEASC recommendations. And that's about it.
Any other questions?
Just regarding the roof, is that something that could be viewed electronically somewhere? Is that something that could be made available as an electronic? Surely because at one point I was on the Facilities and School Building Advisory Commission. Sure raises some of the details. I'm not sure if other board members are as well. Just so we don't have to have Mr. Kemp read it to us, you know, we'll try the lengthy. Whereas.
Any other questions?
Can I ask Mr. Kemp a question to you? Regarding the NEASC report, there were areas where it appeared that the system had not done, Vernon had not done what they were supposed to do. There appear to be discrepancies in reporting what had taken place or hadn't taken place. Did you discuss all that and it was all straight and all cleared up?
Well, in particular, I referenced pages 80 and 81. There were specific references. I think it was on those pages anyway, on things like reporting. And yet on page 85, it commended us for the reporting that we're doing. So it was like, well, which is, and so far as I'm concerned, if we are doing the reporting that NEASC wants, what was stated on page 80 and 81, then it becomes irrelevant. And apparently we are. In the case of the strategic plan, they criticized us for not having one. I thought we had one in the six-year capital improvement plan. So in that case, So in that case, we decided that we will, in fact, create a longer-term plan. So where they criticize us, we accepted it, and yet where they contradicted their criticism, we said, oh, that's interesting, but so long as we're doing what they want us to do, what they said in an earlier part of the report, we can only just disregard.
I was speaking more of the specifics that I wish I had the report in front of me, David, I'm sorry, that, that maintenance-type things that were supposed to be happening were not happening, or there were recordings of them, and whether they had taken place or not was in question. Those kinds of things were, were those just mistakes in the report, or were those issues that Vernon has that we need to address and change?
Well, I think you're probably referring to section seven, and as I said a couple of times, I have many, many points in here highlighted where they, yep, it's on page eighty, where they would say things like what you alluded to, this wasn't done, that wasn't done, and yet, a few pages later, they commend us.
Well, what I'm wondering was, through Mr. Kleins', were those things actually done, or were they not done?
They either were or are, and in the cases where they aren't, we have a plan to do what they're recommending.
Okay.
Specifically, the longer-term strategic plan.
Dr. Collins, I'd like to comment.
Yes. The, the two references, pages eighty-one and eighty-five, when I got the draft report in the summertime, which the principal and I get the draft report and are allowed to speak with the chair, just for your edification, I noticed that conflict immediately. And knowing that we do have it, it was that, do we have all the inspection reports, that the elevator has been inspected, that the fire extinguisher's been inspected, that the emergency lights have been done, those kinds of things, those get certified every year, and we know we do those every single year. Those are always up to date, there's no question. And it sounds like the two people who wrote this report just divided it down the middle. One person wrote the first four paragraphs, the other person wrote the second four paragraphs. So I brought it to the attention of the chair and said, I'd like this fixed, and it is her prerogative, and she just didn't do it. So the report remains the way it is. She agreed, however, that all of the things that we said were there, were there. We're moving MSDS sheets, are a thing of the past now, and there's a new standard, chemical standards from OSHA, and so we are in the process of moving. We do have all the MSDS sheets for all of our chemicals in everywhere, whether it's in the food service, or chemistry labs, or custodial areas, we have all of those sheets in every single city. So it just, it was, I don't think it was accurate in the report, and as I said, I did speak with the chair, and I don't know what she does with that information in my request until we receive the report, and it obviously was not changed. So there's not much we can do about that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item six point zero, to review and update the Board of Education calendar. Does anybody have anything on calendars? Okay, item seven point zero, opportunity for questions from the class on agenda items. Is there a second? All those in favor? Yes. Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everybody.